Okay, greetings everyone. I think we're ready to call our meeting to order. And so we'll start with 1.1 Roehl Hall.
Mark Carlton.
Katie Missell. 1.2 Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic, which extends to all of us. Thank you.
I think we have an agenda adjustment.
We do, you're right. For the 1.3.
I believe that you are actually leading that process.
So, the one agenda adjustment is Mr. Nelson is not here. And so I am actually leading this meeting, so it's Miss Missell.
I think that this is the point where you all actually go through an electric chair, a vice chair.
Yes.
We need to at least have a chair.
Better. Oh.
Yes.
We just found that out. One second.
How does this process work? Will someone nominate someone?
If anyone is interested or nominate, if you're interested, speak up now. Get out.
I'll nominate Katie for the chairs. Can I second that? Yeah, I'll second that.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The vice chair. Should I thought this one through more?
You're missing Erin.
Erin is not with us. I guess it comes down to if either one of you guys are interested in serving as vice chair.
They can be chosen to be a member on board.
I'm okay with that. Okay. That worked out too long? Okay. Okay, 1.4 Agenda review and approval. Mary did one amendment.
Maybe, maybe I should, could just make a comment at this time.
Okay.
Quit running with that law. Like, I forwarded to the board an email from longtime board director Stephen Nelson, and I need to read that into the record here.
And I don't have my phone. Okay.
That's okay. And it says, "Dr. Wong and school board members, this was sent yesterday afternoon. I have had significant health issues during this last year and as such have had to obtain medical treatment through doctors in the Medford area. While I still have my home in town, New Falls, it is most likely in my best interest to look for housing down here in the valley. Obviously, to be on the board, a person needs to reside inside the school district boundaries. I don't see that situation being possible going forward this next year. I have enjoyed working with the board as well as the district administration over past years and appreciate the joint effort of the others in our district. The schools had many challenges, but I think we have greatly increased the potential of the district with all of our hard work. So please accept my resignation effective August 8, 2022. Lastly, I want to thank Dr. Wong for his support of our district and many hours he's put in to make all our projects successful. It has been a rewarding experience to work with Phil and I wish him continued success in guiding our district to a better future. Thank you, Stephen Nelson." And I wanted to share that he communicated me yesterday. He was not actually planning, he wanted to share this in person and was planning on attending tonight. But the bug that catches people has caught him. He can't be here for public health reasons, so I appreciate that. It does seem at some point later in the agenda, maybe we get to comments, the board could have a discussion. Steve, Stephen has been on the board in this community for many years and we may want to think about some type of recognition of his contribution.
I completely agree with that.
But I wanted to read that now upfront, and that's important. It is a small district and a small community and to have people serve like you all do, like he has faithfully, is really important. So, okay.
Dr. Wong, can you hear me? We've lost sound from your end.
You guys are muted.
Try again.
There you go. Okay.
Has it been gone for a while?
No, just a few minutes.
I'm just a few, just a few seconds. I thought it was my end because I was having technical difficulties, but then I was like, no, I think it's them. I can't hear them.
Okay, thank you. We want this to be on the record.
Um, so 2.1 Correction approval of regular meeting minutes for June 13, 2020. Does anyone have any corrections for that? We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June 13. Thank you Dan. Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 3.0 Communications report. 3.1 Superintendent report. Updates, Dr. Wong.
Well, I don't have a lot of enrollment or attendance because we haven't had school session. But what I would like to share with you is while I was out of state in July, I managed to sit in on two virtual meetings with the contractors on our seismic work. And like every project in the valley, they're running behind. But I, their goal was August 1st and it looks like our office area, at least will be done August 15th. They will be ready for kids when kids come back. They're making, setting up the forums right now in the parking lot and for the retaining walls. And they actually did a small pour today of a retaining wall. And the installation of the safety fencing and gates is going well. We have all the materials, which is the name of the game right now is make sure you have materials. And we anticipate the office remodel to be done by August 15th. So.
Okay, I thought Julie mentioned September 15th.
Yeah, we needed August 15th. So. And our office managers have been on site since last Monday, August 1st. And we're already in online enrollment and we're watching our numbers and we are, we're hunting down people that we've lost contact with. And we also have some new enrollments too. So we're optimistic about the year. I am struggling with one area in hiring. I cannot locate and secure a high school English language arts teacher yet, and that's a very important hire. There is a shortage of teachers out there. I did have one candidate to the point where I made an offer. But they actually decided to leave education and look for work elsewhere because of the market. So, we're going to continue to work that piece and we definitely want to complete our team. We have a seventh grade opening that's posted and we're depending on our enrollment is. We may have to consolidate some classes. So we'll see how that all works and I will keep you posted on those aspects of getting schools started. Our lawn care groundskeeping this summer hasn't been what I had hoped it would be. Our longtime mower is no longer able to mow for us, the person who did that. And I have a new person we're training right now. We hope to have our fields and the grounds back in shape within a week or week and a half to get things greased up. There you go.
Any questions? When you say class combo, are we looking at like six, seven, if that's what we had to do?
It would be blending two classes. It would be two very long enrollment classes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, 3.2 Public comment. Do we have any public that wants to comment? Julie's not in the room, but I don't think we do. Okay. 4.0, oh.
Can I interject one more thing?
Yes.
My notes that I did not, that I overlooked. On the elementary campus, in the course of them redesigning the downspouts, you may recall that what we had were scupper drains that just pumped water out of our concrete. They were trying to reactivate the original drainage system and decided our downspout system had decided to stay with the scuppers. But they redesigned the roof so that water should not pool on the roof. And the scuppers will not be dumping out on the ground. They're actually going to be plumbed into the drainage system so that the water will leave, leave the area, not cause problems with icing that we have in the winter.
That'll work.
Yeah. Apologize for having a problem here. Then, but in the course of that, they needed to cut up part of the asphalt that runs along the back of the school. And I think if you're familiar with that patch of asphalt, that's been cut into a number of times. And so recognizing that, that while it will change the dumping of water there, that we tended to have ice pool there and kids slip. I went ahead and authorized them to remove the rest of that asphalt and replace it. It's going to be that, along with a couple of other changes, we're going to add about $400,000, $400,000 to the scope of what we're doing. But I think the safety issues there and getting that all as one piece of asphalt rather than coming back and doing the patching later makes it well worth the investment now. I did consult with our business manager and we do have funding for capital improvements. And since that's the priority, we can cover it within our budget, but I wanted to let you all know that is a decision that I made. And the other decision, when you drive up to the campus, they are replacing the bulk of the drive-through. But there was a patch of about 400 square feet or maybe a little bigger than that that goes between the street and where they were starting their work that had deteriorated so much that I had to remove that so we can have that all have integrity because it doesn't make sense to fix this and have a piece that's going to just fall apart. And so those two expenses totaled about $40,000. I just want you to be aware of that. I'm not making any changes to scope other than those that are related to safety. And so with that, we had some other expenses we'd already anticipated. Our replacement of the doors in the gym that we did not pay out last year's budget. There was a cost escalation of those by about 80% in steel while the project went on. And so at this point, we ballparked, overrun on the whole project. It's about $80,000. And then we're going to work to contain costs elsewhere where we can, but we do have funding to cover that.
So we have new doors on the gym now?
We do.
This is the elementary?
At the elementary.
Because they weren't even locking properly. I've been part of that last time.
Right, yeah. Now, for safety reasons, we now have steel self closing doors and it's what we needed to do.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry for interruptions.
So that's perfect, Dr. Wong.
I need to let you know of about a $60,000 shift in costs.
Anyone have questions about any of that? Sure. No, those doors needed to be replaced. I've actually.
We got a break, we got a break in because those doors aren't working right.
Yeah, and I've tried to lock the doors and have it look like it locked and it didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had to do it.
We have people in the area.
Most.
And cameras.
Okay, okay, so. 4.1 Board policy, section E, support services, second reading.
In your packet last time, you had a bunch of board policies and they were around support services. And this would be the second reading. We didn't really have a lot of controversy when we discussed the items. They're perfunctory around transportation and test management, things like that. I'd like to read into the record the codes for the policies and ask your approval of these so we can move forward with updating our board policy book. So, those policies are EB Safety Program, EBAC Centralized Safety Committee, EBACAR Centralized Safety Committee, it's a regulation. EBV Integrated Test Management, EBVA First Aid, EBVA, EBVA A, Infection Control and Bloodborne Pathogens, EBBB Injury Illness Reports, EDCV Emergency Drills and Instruction, EDCV Emergency Closures, EDKGF Authorized Use of District Equipment Materials, EA Student Transportation, EEAC School Bus Safety Program, EACC School Conduct on Buses, EEACB Use of District Activity Vehicles for Student Transportation, EACE Loading and Unloading, EEE Student Transportation in Private Vehicle, EFA Local Wellness Program, EFAA District Nutrition and Food Services, EFAAR Reimbursable Deals and Bill program, EGAA Reproduction of All Copyrighted Materials, EGAAAR Guidelines for the Use of Copyrighted Materials. I believe that was it. So we did our first reading on June 13th. This could be considered the second reading. If there are no other concerns, there are please, yes.
I have two.
Okay.
Number one deals with the central safety committee.
Yes.
Why do we need a centralized safety committee when we have like a district safety committee that oversees the whole thing anyway?
That essentially is what it is. It's a policy around that to give it in policy the basis for that committee. So.
Why do we need it centralized? I don't see that.
The centralization is the superintendent's office. That's it. Basically, it has representatives from each of the school campuses in the superintendent's office.
That would all go under a safety committee.
Correct, correct. And so basically, I think it's just the naming of that as opposed to a safety committee for the district, the centralized safety committee is the board policy recommended title for that policy.
So it's not an additional?
No.
It's the same one.
Right, it's just incorporated it under policy language. Exactly, it is. Another question?
Yes. They had an issue in EEA. They call it safe school districts. Well, in this entire country, there is not a safe school district to be had. And I don't see why they even bothered to put it in there.
I didn't read the slides. It's me. Sorry.
That's it.
Towards the bottom, I highlight. And then it says that you can transport your students to a safe school district. In this entire country, you don't have that.
I think that relates to the use of federal funds or cooperative agreements if you have situations, health situations, fire situations where you're transporting, transporting a student outside of your district. Oh, a student who's a victim of violent crime, offense occurring at your school.
I'm wondering if it's attending school possibly with people that were victimized.
It is. It's related to if the student is, is victimized in your district, then you are authorized and must use funds to help transport them to another district. But it has to be the designation of a safe school district and that's a federal designation. That's what that's about.
So it means we're allowed to or we are required?
We have a.
I think it means we're required to.
Right.
And I, to me, I kind of read that. I mean, that could be read many ways, but if a student was victimized in your school district and wanted to attend school somewhere else, we provide transportation to somewhere they felt safer. Is that?
Yeah, and actually, it says may use, we may use several funds. It says that we must, so.
It says students?
It stands, yeah. So noted.
That could really.
Cost.
There's no determination of what.
Okay, so I need a motion and a second to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the board, to adopt board policy, section E.
That's present.
As presented.
All second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're at 4.2 Code Vaccination Requirements for Volunteers.
I, today, the Department of Ed released its update on guidance to schools and there has been no change in the requirements for volunteers. The requirement is that volunteers in schools either be vaccinated or have an approved exception, which would be a medical exception or a religious exception in order to be volunteers in schools. That's the Oregon State Regulation, so it's a law. It isn't just guidance from the Department.
So it, okay. And is that also, is that a requirement? I guess employees, it's the same thing.
Yes, yeah. It stands for, what I did learn, I've been attempting for fun this summer, the Jackson County Health Meetings with any school officials who do have anything to do in the summer. But I did learn at the last one that at this point, they do not anticipate requiring employees to get booster shots this year.
So it's the initial vaccine?
It's the initial vaccine. If you've done that, there's no requirement for anything beyond that.
And that includes volunteers?
That would include volunteers if they're vaccinated. They would not need to get booster shots.
So like this year, because I know some, a lot of parents were asking about this last year, including myself. Um, I did do the initial two vaccines. If I pass the background check and am okay with you guys being on campus and apply.
Then you would, you qualify to be a volunteer. Yeah.
To that extent.
But at this point, we're still not allowed to have unvaccinated volunteers unless they have medical or religious exception.
So how, is there any way to? I, I just, I foresee that being the restriction.
It is a, it's a constriction on us. It is.
So when you have people that are willing to donate their time, they can't unless they're, unless they're good.
An exemption, exception. You have to either the two.
Or they.
Either an exception for religious reasons or medical reasons.
The, the second is probably not that practical to do a religious review on every volunteer.
Correct. It's a, it's a very awkward position our government has put us in.
What, what's the requirement for visitors? You can visit. Well, you think of a sport, sporting event.
Yeah.
There is none.
So you can visit?
Right, but you can't volunteer. And that actually has to do, I think, with in part with proximity to kids and, you know, if you're visiting and you're a spectator, you're in the stands. I think that's, I mean, Mark, please don't, please don't ask me to defend this because it gets really great. It gets really great.
I'm just trying to.
You know, for, for example, we had a request to use our facility this weekend for a softball tournament. It is not a school event. And I can authorize that because it's not a school event, not school sponsored. It is on our field, but people are not going to be in our buildings. Actually, we're going to allow access to our concession stand, but I will need to make sure that we do sanitize it when it's all set. But, but, you know, I was trying to find a way to invite our community back in. And I think the whole dance we did last year around masks at practices or not, I don't, they're optional. Masks are optional. And that's where we are right now.
We've already, always had stricter regulations for interacting with the kids. Because I used to do the parent club and we would do the carnival and the talent show, which was a lot of fun to do. But, oh, first year I didn't realize this, so second year, everybody has to be background checked. Anybody that's coming to help you with an event, and well, now currently we need background check the, at least one set of vaccinations.
Right.
Um, and that's just because they're interacting with children.
Sure.
Within the school district.
Yeah, I get that. We're, we're working at Ashland High School.
I've had a lot of people turned off by that one.
I'm just, I guess I'm just wondering if, it sounds like the rules are what they are or is the, is the board, are we interested in raising the flag to our, whoever's mandating this to say, hey, we don't, we don't like it or maybe we do like it, but I don't. But my thought is it's, it's hurting us, not helping us, but I can't speak for the board.
I, I, I think it makes it, excludes some parents who choose not to get vaccinated. And they have a choice to do that and I'm not judging them even on that. I do think that we do have some more flexibility this year around general events where people come and are spectators. And as long as we can do that piece, I will continue to work on state officials around the volunteer piece because we have some parents out there who want to help, who are not, do not qualify under the current more rigid standard. They would pass a background check.
Sure.
So.
Well, the organization that brought this to my attention was the that agricultural, youth, youth and agricultural committee, which is part of the Jackson County Cattle Association. So they, they hit all the districts in the county trying to promote agricultural education and showcase them. And this was one of the barriers. Yeah, one of the barriers. So it's a, it's, it's, it's more than just a few parents. I mean, there's a, we're a natural resource based school and here's an agricultural affiliation that wants to get involved in the district. So that's just the one, there might, there might be more than.
I think there are impacts and, you know, that, that we don't know of.
Right, right.
And, and so, you know, what I, what I would say is we're starting the year in better shape than we were last year, but it's not back where we were in 2019. And if we can keep moving back, moving forward, back to that.
Sure. I guess that was my question.
I've been trying to get on campus for a year and I'm excited. I could do it, but I get what you're saying. So I know some parents that want to get in, get involved and help their adequately against vaccine period.
Right. My question is, can we do anything about it and do we want to do anything about it? Sounds like right now it's no.
I, I think, I don't think you can do anything about it right now because it's actually an Oregon administrative regulation, like law, as opposed to, oh, me or the health department saying, hey, you guys should.
Right. Well, it kind of comes back to local controls, the local districts. Doesn't mean that it would come through, but at least we could have a discussion here locally instead of waiting for the state to say it's bad.
I think they made this rule permanent, it's never going to be, there was some.
So it is permanent.
It's permanent until they decide they don't need it anymore and then it could be up.
So my question would be what our insurance company says, which I think we've asked this before.
They would say you need to follow the regulations.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. Yeah.
But what I would tell you is we're trying to plan with fidelity for the law so we don't violate any regulations, but we can maximize the happens for today.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
I'm with you, Mark. I get that.
Say something to that. Do you mind if I say something to that? Sorry.
Oh, Karina.
Hey y'all. Hey. So me and Dr. Wong have chatted about this and I'm a parent too, you know, and my feeling is I want you guys back. I want, we, we want volunteer, we want, we want people back in the school. Don't think that that's not what we want. We absolutely, so we're, I mean, I'm diligently working hard if the regulations change or if there's something that we can do different. So we are continually talking about this and looking into it because it is important to us. So I just want you guys to know that and just understand that we, we've, we, we feel, like I said, you know, I'm a parent. I'm, I've been a teacher. I've been through this. We're all in this together and I, and I just want you to let you know that we're, we're on your side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Okay, so 4.3 Public attendance at board meetings.
And I, I put this on here because we had talked to Jim about this and hope to have open customers today. And yet the rate of infection in Jackson County, actually in Oregon, is at a very high level. If we were in the old standard, we would probably be having a virtual meeting right now. Us too. That, that being said, I think it's fair to get capitalized and I, Mark, to give you an opportunity to make sure that we get to sweep this up.
Right. I guess my, my thought is if it's a, if it's open to the public, that's, that's a choice. So if, if they. if someone feels it's a hazard to come to the meeting, then they don't have to come. So I don't understand. It's still, it's still giving the, the people the choice whether they want to take that risk or not. And if they got all their vaccines and boosters and masked up and they feel it's safe to come, why not let them?
So I'll tell you from my perspective, I just have, dealing with a pretty serious illness right now, requires some medication. And if this had been an open meeting, then I, I would have done the virtual. Small enough venue, we have enough air movement here, I'm okay with you guys. Trust me. I know some of the things that have happened recently that make me think I'm not going to get COVID from you. But, but people, people will always have that information and it, and actually what might be perceived as a public meeting, those people, those, I guess those other people could have said virtually, can't they?
The ones that were concerned.
Yeah.
But I also think we need a bigger
Right.
building than this. For the first couple, because we've had, we've opened up our meetings at the town and just like other school districts have said, you get a larger attendance for the first couple of months in the summer.
We're rolling right now.
We're still doing the community hall, which I mean, I'm sure is open to school, we're going to do that there, you know?
I mean, you, you just said it, Katie. There's, we need a bigger venue because there's that many people that want to be here.
It's possible.
That should, right there, answer the question on if it's something that the constituents want or not. I don't think it matters what the board wants, I think it matters what the constituents want.
Well, then I assume they will bring their cards and show that they have been vaccinated then. I'm not willing to impair my health because of my immune system for a bunch of people that don't bring them. And they say they are and they are not. No.
It comes back to, if, if it's a choice.
Is it required for a public meeting?
To come or not.
I don't think it's required to have a vaccine for a public meeting.
No, it's not.
So what we, so what we would need to do then is if we had staff like me, who would be uncomfortable in that setting, given something went on right now, okay? Then I would attend virtual.
That's.
And we, and we would set it up so that there would be a public venue where some board members would be there, some staff. We, we would assume if none of us are going to be there, then we would put the public show up, right? So we're so.
We're all on a computer, no.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and, and then people could come there and then other people could join virtually and those members, like we have some tonight who are attending virtually. That, that's what we have to set up technologically. Does the city have that set up for their?
That's right. There's no internet. No, no, I mean, no. Uh, the whole council shows up and whoever shows up, shows up. Now, I will say I caught COVID at work earlier in the summer. So, uh, you know, by people that weren't taking it seriously. So, um, same for a meeting. So, I mean, but I, I get what Mark is saying, like I, I'm going back to the cafeteria again. If we wanted to try going to public meetings, and it can't, it shouldn't really just be you and I saying that right now, but.
Well, my, my thing is that it should be a choice and right now it's, people don't have a choice. And, and I think, I think it needs to be given a choice.
The limitation is, is can you work virtually? If you have access virtually, that's the limitation. It's, it's if you don't have access through the internet, then you can't attend. I mean.
Right, right.
Right now, that's where we're at.
Right, but yeah.
If they don't have access to the internet, then you can make a setting or an environment for them so that they can be virtual.
Why can't the board members?
Have to be here.
Why can't these people attend virtually if they don't want to be here?
That's my thought as well. I'm kind of a part of that.
So if we were to hold a meeting like in the elementary cafeteria, we could have this as a virtual place. So any board member who couldn't attend in person could come here if they couldn't from their home.
Right. If, if we expect the public to do it, then we should be willing to do ourselves as far as attend virtually.
With, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards Mark here. And I get like September's the beginning of school. Would it be ridiculous for us to say, hey, let's try a public meeting in October?
I would feel better about the temperature.
Would you be okay with that, Mark? Like, like shoot for another public meeting in October?
I think that, I think that would be doable. Then we could also do the virtual from here and people could virtually in if they wanted to.
I have three kids. I've been sick multiple times and I just sit at home and do virtual.
Yeah.
If I'm sick or someone else is sick or I'm worried about the COVID rates.
Is there really a difference between your COVID vaccination requirement for volunteers and having the public out here? Is there a difference?
Public law. I mean, it has to do with the Oregon law.
That's right.
Far as I know, it's not required for public meetings right now. Am I wrong, Dr. Long?
It's not required for public meetings. It's required, it's when we have school in session, it's what we have going at school and for volunteers.
That is about protecting the students and staff members. And again, if we had public meetings, staff members who were uncomfortable, no judgment, virtual meetings, same with board members. I'm not going to judge. I've done virtual most of the days.
I, I could, I, I could see the October meeting.
I just think we, we need to get, we need to get there within.
What's the difference? When you put it right to the bottom line, what's the difference whether they sit here in this room or they're on that screen? What is the difference?
I don't know, but there is a difference in attendance. Right now, we don't have any members in the public. And when we have it available to the public, we had twenty.
There was a lot of, it has to do with, it's, it's beautiful. Like if you log into a Zoom meeting, which I've done multiple times, like I, I'm going to interact with you guys more in the same room with you and hear what's happening more in the same room with you than I'm going to if I was sitting on Zoom, which I usually do Zoom. I, I know the difference, you know?
Zoom is more convenient, but for whatever reason, the, the public wants to be here.
So when I'm here, it is, and I, I'm going to support it if you all would. Let's shoot for October.
I make a motion that our October board meeting is public and I will help in any way I can to make that happen.
Well, it is technically public right now, but what you're saying is.
In person, public can attend in person.
Or a hybrid.
So I, that's my motion. Our October meeting will be.
Hybrid.
Um, yeah, hybrid, where the public is welcome to attend in person and we'll make adjustments. Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
The motion doesn't pass. We need three votes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, okay. We'll try in September. We're good. Okay. Uh, five point O, new business. Five point one, official designations. You guys all have that in your packet.
In your packet. These are what the designation should make every year so we can actually run the district.
Yep, like write the checks, all that stuff. Anyone have questions about it?
Only one I don't know. Did it get changed on yours? The public safety officer, is it Phil Long? Good.
Thought it was.
Yeah, it was.
Can I make a motion to approve the official designations for the upcoming school year?
Yeah, and I think I need to read him into the record. I'm sorry that I think that's.
Okay, so let's do that first.
Take a nap here or whatever. Superintendent, school district clerk, Dr. Philip Long, Korean officer, Dr. Phil Philip Long. Deputy clerk, budget officer, Rachel Aiken, safety officer, Dr. Philip Long. Uh, transportation director, Julie Freeman. Regular board meeting date, time, place designated the second Monday of each month, six P M. At the district office meeting room. Seven hundred twenty Laurel Avenue, Falls, Oregon. Depositories, district funds will be deposited at Northwest Bank or Savings in Jackson County. And the local government investment pool secured by F D I C and proper collateralization. Legal counsel, OSBA Legal Division, Paul Decopolis Attorney and the Hungerford Law Firm. That's three different resources we have. Uh, because there is a specialization. Insurance agent of record, White Williamson, Protector's Insurance, L L P. Coordinator of Americans with Disabilities Act, or Dr. Philip Long. Newspaper of record, the Metford Mail Tribune. Authorized bonds provision for district clerk and deputy clerk, uh, that would be Protector's Insurance, L L P. Authorized persons to sign district and student account checks, requires two signatures. Philip Long, district accounts. Karina Frey, district and student accounts. Suzie Ford, secondary school accounts. Uh, Julie Freeman, elementary school, uh, accounts. Brittany, uh, Courtney Box, elementary school accounts. And Rachel Aiken, district and student accounts. I do have one amendment under Philip Long. It should also be authorized on the secondary school accounts. Neither, I, Phil Long should also be authorized under secondary school student account because I will be serving as principal of that site or administrative head site.
And, and Dr. Long, Julie is on the student accounts, not just the elementary school. She is on, actually on both accounts.
Good, okay. Okay, so yeah, secondary and elementary. Yes, that didn't get changed under Julie Freeman. Those were changes we made based on changes in our administrative structure. So it allows us to have a little aside on signing checks. Authorized persons to apply for and receive federal, state and private grant funding, uh, the superintendent clerk and the deputy clerk. Are, uh, determines the auditor as Cooley, Rapp and Freel LLC, B P A, uh, Munger Davidson and Company. Four oh three B vendors, we're designating American Fidelity, Horace Mann. Section one twenty five vendor, American Fidelity. H S A provider is American Fidelity. Investment provider, American Fidelity. Local public contractor, U Board, District is to be fall school board, usually been designated committee for that one. Student accident insurance is Meyer, Stevenson and Tootsie. Those are the official designations covered by your motion.
Do we have a second to approve the official presentations?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, six point O, personnel, six point one, administrative assistant agreement.
One second, Katie.
Yes.
Were we going to make like a five point two or which thing you was, oh, yeah.
Oh, no, we need to, we need to. Thank you, Dan. Um.
So five point two would be.
Accepting the resignation.
Resignation of, of board member Stephen Nelson, uh, August eighth, two thousand twenty two. And it's an action item, so you need a motion, a second, and then a vote.
Make a motion to approve his resignation.
So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know you did want to say that, but thank you.
No, and, and Steve, again, thank you for.
Do I need to write a letter to him on behalf of the board?
I would love that. Let's go sign it.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Um, do we have to officially open up this position to let people know that it's open?
You know what? We, because this happened tonight, I think that's a, a new business next meeting to talk about the process. It is, I will tell you, this term is up this next year. Would it, it's been considering whether we run for reelection in the spring. So, and you would be appointing someone for like eight or nine months. But then there would be an election for the position.
Like saying, there's only three of us at least.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, okay. So we can put that under a new business.
When's the term date?
Jim, was the cycle? Jim, um, it's, it's odd years. It's three positions or, or two, three positions or one set of two years and the two are the others. Um, I believe, did you run for reelection this last year?
I mean, is it July through June?
Is, that the term is, the term is July first to June thirty. The election's in May of the proceeding. Term is four years and the term would be four years.
Yeah.
Julie has those dates, so.
Do you six point one?
Six point one, administrative assistant agreement.
So, um, each year I bring to you the Julie's administrative agreement. The only changes that I'm recommending to it, requesting, is that you would grant her a five percent raise this coming year. And that you would grant her the same increase in insurance benefits that the licensed staff has or licensed, her contract has been tied to that. So it's, there really effectively is only a change in salary amount in the actual document and the years. So that's my recommendation, given everything that's not economically, that's a modest raise.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, our agreement with her with, uh, said salary and benefit increases.
Will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so we'll go to six point U.
Where you dance, no, I'll be right back.
Do you want me to hang on to this or you want to keep it?
No, make a copy of it.
I can make a copy before we go.
Um, the contract that we are, uh, offering Karina is effectively the contract that we offered our previous principal with an increase of salary based on the cost of the increases we've seen. There really are effectively no other changes. I will tell you, um, I have already presented this to her, to the board chair because you all approved hiring her in June. And we had an obligation to pay her in July when we were meeting. But, um, I can give you each, uh, a copy and the salary amount in it was increased to the, to eighty nine thousand four hundred and twenty nine for the first year. And here's a copy.
I have all things.
So, so effectively, this is the contract that we worked with, it through the attorney a year ago, to make sure we had a solid agreement. While it speaks to wages for three years, she technically has a one-year contract. And next spring, I will bring to you a recommendation whether to renew that one-year contract for another year. In which case, if you do, these are the terms of that agreement. So that means that we don't have to go through a, a whole reworking of the whole employment terms. It's really about is this, has this person performed and are we going to renew him for a second year? And then there would be a third year. At that point, if my recommendation was to renew her, it would be she become a contract administrator and she automatically would go on a two-year contract cycle. But, um, this is what I worked with OSBA a couple of years ago on and, um, I, you need to know, I've looked around, it's competitive. Um, it's fair and she is willing to work for us for the, under these conditions. And she actually has agreed to this. But I did do feel I needed to break, as an obligation to bring you a copy and get it in the record. It's a public document. So, so what I'm asking for is your collective approval of this contract, which is the same terms we have last year for our previous principal, plus the salary increase. So.
Now, isn't there, when you go to renew?
Yes.
Aren't there timeframes that have to be met?
Yes. And, and so the very first clause in this contract says these terms of employment are effective against, uh, July one to twenty twenty two through July thirtieth, uh, June thirty of twenty twenty five. But then it says this section constitutes notice of contract non-renewal under O R S three forty two, five, one, three and contract extend, non-extension. It means you've already notified her that she could be non-renewed at the end of the year. That's in here is the first clause. So, so it will take your action to renew this contract. Otherwise, it's not renewed.
Time frame.
Right. And, and, and I need, that needs to be done by March fifteenth. Yeah, thank you. That's what you're, you're putting. In fact, if you look at it, it says in the, under salary, if the principal is recommended for a one-year renewal at contract by March fifteenth, the base salary should go up. That's, it's a line so that this term of agreement, terms of employment, basically, employment agreement aligned with that T S B C or, or state annual reading. And I wrote it in there for that very reason, because it's really easy to, to have an error there and then you know what's mattered everyone and rather than having to be clear about it. We have trouble with it. I can't believe that. Okay, okay. I, that's my recommendation. You, you, you retroactively approve this contract essentially.
And make a motion that we approve, um, principal's contract for, uh, this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And you said it's, it's a competitive.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah. Um, the last thing I wanted to share with you as far as staffing, um, first of all, I did, uh, offer to Ben DeCarlo a position change. He is going to be our high school science teacher this next year, which opened up a separate position, which we're interviewing, which we have posted. And we have the, the English Language Arts position posted. We also have some extra duty positions that we've not hired to yet. And, um, meeting with the A D, Eli, uh, Bowers tomorrow to talk through all of that. Um, trying to think. I can't remember Julie. It seemed like we had made a decision on one extra duty position. I can't remember what it is. I will send that out to you as an email, so it doesn't require board approval, but to keep you.
To keep Ben and not Ben, Eli's for A D.
Oh, we do, do we need to take action? It's an extra competition.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Take action on that one. The rest will take care of it.
Okay. So the recommendation, which you can tell I'm really counting on passing, is to hire Eli Bowers as our athletic director for the two thousand twenty two, twenty three school year.
He was last year as well.
In fact, he wasn't. We had a different A D last year. He's always our B teacher.
Oh, so he just wasn't the athletic director?
Correct. He was a teacher, but he wasn't, yeah.
Oh, okay. I will, I will make a motion to approve him as the athletic director.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie, for keeping me on track. That's why you wanna get rid of that.
Agreed.
It's well worth it.
She definitely is. So did that cover six point three and six point four?
Yes, it did.
So we're at seven point O, comments from the board.
I don't have any comments.
I don't, yeah.
My, my only comment is that I would like us to consider maybe to plan, and I'll talk to Stephen about it, an opportunity to recognize if they're at the September or October school board meeting for the service.
Okay.
Be a good way for him to correct that since.
I completely agree.
Does, does anybody have the, um, the dates for the next?
I can do this. Okay, I can do this.
A calendar.
Okay.
I think ended in June. For the school year.
Well, it should be on the, it should be even on the new.
It's on, it is.
I have on your website already.
He just needs me to sit down, that's like getting it still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I think we're done.
Okay.
Shall we adjourn?
Yes, um, do I have a motion to adjourn our meeting? Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. I hope you guys get someone to stay down. I'm mostly out of trouble. I drove all the way from, uh, she's still recording, by the way.
Yeah.
I think she might be here.
Yeah, it's recorded.